So, just a couple of questions, that's all I've got tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not spoken at the last meeting who would like to speak tonight, who's new to this conversation? Want to give those people an opportunity.
Oh, and they didn't clap for me.
David McCullough, 3 Sequoia Ave in Londonderry. Just looking at this from the reports that are in the newspaper, things that are there, it is strange to see the process. It is difficult for me to imagine, and I've been an accountant, business consultant for over forty years, of having a situation where you go in and terminate an employee in this manner. I mean, at this point, you're saying it would be appropriate, I think, to say to the employee, we're talking about reorganizing. If we do, this position will be eliminated. I figure that's a heads up. But you don't terminate somebody that way. You don't terminate somebody and force them not to be able to go back to their desk. What are you so concerned about? There's nothing in any of the information that says she was a bad employee, or that she was a problem in the town hall. There's nothing about that. This is the kind of action you take when you've got an employee that is dangerous. It was humiliating. So I think there's questions. We have a lot of questions. As the last speaker said, did they follow the personnel code? Did they follow the collective bargaining agreement? I think this shows an extreme lack of judgment. It puts into jeopardy everything that the person, town manager, proposes. Because this is, it's all about judgment at this point. And if I can't rely on the person's judgment, then I have to backtrack on everything that he or she says. So in looking at this, I was disappointed, because in the last meetings, when I read the minutes, there was an indication that there was an issue with 4.8. I would like to have known that before I got up here tonight. Is that something that you think you have an issue? What was the decision of the town attorney? What are some of the other things that were brought up in the minutes? What is the disposition of those? So that we have an idea that this is properly being looked at. I think for the town, it was very disappointing. As an employee, would I want to come to work for an organization that has this as its record? If I have two job offers, this is a big black mark for the town of Londonderry. I would not want to come to work here. I would find somewhere else. If we've got employees that are in that mode, you know, everybody's looking for good employees, if they're thinking about leaving, we've now given them a reason to go looking. So this is what I want you guys to consider. Is judgment, was it appropriate? Did we follow the rules? Are you going to report back to us that the investigation is done? Are we going to get a report that says, this is what was done, this was in accordance with the rules, and this is why we did it this way? Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Liz Neville. I'm at 5 Isabella Drive in Londonderry. I adamantly disagree with this reorganization plan. I believe that the treatment of Laura Gandia was unfair and mean. My faith teaches me to treat others as you would want to be treated.
Ms. Neville, you need to address me.
And I ask, would you want to be treated that way? Would you want somebody to walk into your office and say, we're reorganizing, you need to leave?
Is there anyone else who did not speak at the last meeting who wants to speak tonight, from Londonderry?
Martha Smith, 38 Shasta Drive. And I am just very confused by what has happened here, because as far as I know, we were, the town was advertising for a town planner, and we hired a young woman for that job. And shortly thereafter, that woman became the Assistant Town Manager, and I guess Economic Development, and left the planning department without a town manager. Now, from being here at the last meeting, being here at, which I didn't speak at, but, and being here at this meeting, all I've heard about was what a terrific employee Laura is, and that how, specifically how knowledgeable she is on her subject matter. So I really don't understand why you'd be advertising for a town planner right after she was moved into another position, and you had this excellent employee. So now you don't have a town planner, but you're advertising for a town planner, and you're getting rid of an employee who was not only doing her job, but doing it in an excellent manner. So I just think the whole issue is, to the public, is extraordinarily confusing.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Rahilly. I'm over at 1 Ridgemont Drive, here in Londonderry. I don't come to the town meetings too often. I really admire what you guys do, and I appreciate what you do. For the case with Laura Gandia, I think your dismissal was handled poorly. Lot of ways it could have been done, that was not the way to do it. I've known her for a number of years. She's outstanding character, skilled, helpful, level-headed, conscientious, and she's legally wise. To lose her as a planner, or an assistant planner, would be a loss of legal skill that you're going to be paying for on the back end. Paying lawyers a couple hundred dollars an hour to do the stuff that she's doing as an associate planner is not wise. When I heard about the position that was coming, a missing lead planner role, it just strikes me as common sense that you would promote her from within to take that role that she's been doing for so long. And it's a simple decision. She's outstanding. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Tamara Lampus, 6 Dicky Street.
Ma'am, you're out of order. I am running the stopwatch on my phone right now. It's right here, right? Do not be out of order again, or you will be asked to leave.
Can you repeat the name, please?
Sure. Tamara Lampus, 6 Dicky Street.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Regarding the Assistant Town Manager, Economic Development Director, that was listed in your minutes today. Is this the current job description of what this person does, or is this, because I see that there's an associate planner in here, so I'm a little confused, just trying to understand.
So we don't generally get into, you know, what the positions are
Right.
in public comment, and with regards, if it's, what you have is the job description that is posted on the town website, so that would be the job?
The current one, which is 11, because there's two here. There's 11, 11/22, and there's 8, 17, 16. I guess that's what's confusing me.
I'm saying 11/22 is probably, whichever one is the most recent one, I would think it would be. I can't see what you're looking at.
Okay, well, it was in the pamphlet of minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Elizabeth Harrison, 19 Severn Street in Londonderry. I work for a civil engineering company in Bedford that works very closely with the planning department here in Londonderry, and very closely with Laura, and very concerned about what this absence will leave for our developers in town. And knowing that there's no town planner as well, we are obviously concerned about that as well. So just in general, just taking into account what you guys are leaving as an absence by doing this. Obviously, like my mom said, my dad worked in town for several years. This is something that I find very out of character for this town to do. So knowing what has happened is very disconcerting. I have been a big component for Londonderry for many years in my office, they all know that. We have looked at other towns, other big developers, and they're concerned for where Londonderry's direction is headed. So just take that into account. Laura has been always extremely helpful, so just know that.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken, who was not at the last meeting and spoke at the last meeting?
Monica Rahilly, 1 Ridgemont Drive, Londonderry. And I'm here to also, you know, just agree with what everyone is saying about Laura Gandia, her character, how disappointed I am with what happened to her, eliminating her job. It really is very discouraging to hear that Londonderry town is acting this way, treating her this way. She has so much integrity, so much character, so many skills she brings to Londonderry. And when you think about it, it's very cost-effective to have somebody like Laura in our town, working on the Planning Commission. So I just want to be on record as saying I disagree totally with this reorganization plan, and I hope and pray that you'll reconsider and change your minds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd really like everyone else to have an opportunity to speak first. Dan, please, I'm asking you, please.
Will I later?
I'm going, I'm going to go all the way till eight o'clock, and I'm keeping time that we're running over on three minutes. So I'm trying, I want to make sure I accommodate everyone.
Okay.
Trying to be fair to everybody.
Well, you had interrupted me, that's why I wanted to finish what I was saying. So I thought it would just be fair if you let me finish what I was saying.
Dan, if it's okay, I'm going to let other people speak, okay?
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak with regards, who has not spoken at the last meeting? Hi, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Patty Scarfo. I live at 167 Winterwood Drive. I'm a friend of Laura's for a very long time, and she has helped me in numerous ways. She just gives, and gives, and gives, and gives, without hesitation. I can only imagine that she does the same thing in the workplace. She's got such a giving spirit, such a loving spirit. And the way that she was treated on the day that she was escorted out just broke my heart, because she did not deserve that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like many others, I know Laura, I've worked with her. She's of the highest integrity and caliber. I can only imagine that she takes that, or took that, to her town responsibilities. Sadly, I think it's too late to get Laura back. I don't think I'd want to come back, if that was the case. I realize that the town manager has a tough job, and so do you guys. And I hope that, whatever the outcome, that the town of Londonderry can heal itself. The one thing that I noticed as I'm reading through all the information, the minutes, the articles about this, is that it said that the associate planner's job is a non-exempt job, or an hourly job, that receives overtime. And I can't fathom how that could be, and whether the points, the HR points that make something a non-exempt job, whether this actually was or not. I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who did not speak at the last meeting, who would like to speak now, who is a Londonderry resident? And then I'm going to go out, then I'm going to go
It's going to be real quick.
Starting with you, then I'm going to go back out to the people who want to speak again.
I appreciate you letting me come back up. One thing that was very disturbing to me, to find out, okay, is that Chris Gandia retired from this police department, okay? As a captain, Councilor Butler, at town meeting, gave him an award, spoke highly of this gentleman. And yet, he was served with a no trespass, okay, on the town property of Londonderry. Why? Why was Chris Gandia, because he supports his wife, and she was served with a no trespass order on town property? I just think there's so much more to this than a reorganization. You really, really have to look at this gentleman, and ma'am, okay? Because this is, this is not good for the town of Londonderry, not at all, okay? And I looked at the video, at town meeting, where Councilor Butler spoke so highly of Chris, and I'm so disappointed that he got served a no trespass order, and his wife. That's what I have to say. Very disappointed. And I hope you guys correct it. I hope you guys fix this. You really, really need to. Listen to what the people said, okay? Would you want to come work for the town of Londonderry? And be faced with situations like that, and be called into an office? I know, when I worked for the town of Londonderry, I told you, okay? I got called into an office. When I left that office, I went right down to Peter Solomon, and we got a restraining order on this town, all right? And how many times has the town paid out because they messed up? That would be interesting. I'd like to know what that figure is. Thank you.
All right. If you're from the town of Londonderry, and you spoke at the last meeting, and you would like to speak again now, please come up.
Amanda Longo, 42 Forest Street. I just had a question for you, or for the council, because I'm not sure, you might recall off the top of your head. Looking through the documentation for the job descriptions, and after hearing Mr. Malaguti speak at length regarding to the positions, it sounded like, or there was a perceived, perception that Mr. Malaguti had been thinking about this reorganization for months. Would you say that's correct?
I'm not going to be answering questions
Okay.
about the process that Mr. Malaguti took.
Okay, of course. I just, I think that was a perception that we got, that this was a well-thought-out, in very long, drawn-out decision. However, I cannot find any meeting minutes for any of the most recent budget workshops, which were just like a week or two before the last meeting, where we discussed this position and the cost savings. So I'm a little bit alarmed, I can't, I just can't find why we didn't discuss these cost savings during all the budget workshops, with the Budget Committee. So if you guys could point me in the direction, so that I know I'm not missing something, I think that would be really helpful, and provide a lot of clarity, that clearly this was not a rash and rushed decision, because that's what it looks like. So the packet for all of this decision was not even posted with the meeting minute, or the meeting agenda, when the meeting agenda was posted the week before. So it does seem very rushed, and particularly where we can't find any of this information in any of the previous workshop meetings. I think it would be helpful to learn that maybe they do exist, and that it was thought out, because it doesn't seem that way.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'm just trying to get through the Londonderry residents.
Can I speak again?
If you're, yes, if you're a Londonderry resident, and you want to speak again, I'm trying to follow in order here.
Ray President, 3 Gary Drive. I'm trying to have to be brief, but I've just got a couple of questions here. I'm not expecting an answer tonight. But according to the town charter, the town manager is supposed to provide administrative code and a personnel plan, which is supposed to be done, I think, within a given period of time. Now, I don't know if that has taken place, but this is a town charter that was online that I got, and it was 2015. Isn't there a newer plan than that? And I think these things are really important, okay? Particularly when we're talking about a personnel plan, okay? So a copy of that is supposed to be filed in the clerk's office in appropriate departments. I went today to try to find those, I didn't have any luck. I'm going to continue to look for those and see what's going on, because definitely, we need some other answers here. And as far as this reorganization, really, it doesn't make sense, and it, I don't think it's in the best interests of Londonderry. So please, correct this.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else from Londonderry? Yes, sir.
Chris Moore, 38, Oakridge Drive, Londonderry. Alternate member of the zoning board, and an active member of leadership Londonderry. I come today to request that you vote against approving the town manager's proposed reorganization. I understand the town budget is limited, and that we already make difficult decisions on where to spend that money. We intentionally understaff our police department to help before the cost of cruiser maintenance and other expenses. I know creative budgeting happens every day to make this town run smoothly, and I appreciate Mr. Malaguti for looking at ways to run this town as efficiently as possible. I also understand that this position is not required to be filled, even if it is available. But price is only an issue in the absence of value. The value that the associate planner position brings to the town far exceeds the cost of the role. The role is currently filled by Laura, and while we are evaluating the position and not the person, it is difficult to separate one from the other. Having witnessed Laura in person on numerous occasions, she goes well above and beyond her role, and as witnessed twice now, the town wants and needs Laura Gandia. To move this town forward, I hope we again consider value, along with price, to the residents of this great town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mitch Feig. I am a member of the zoning board, so I work with Laura closely. I just have four things to say, and I'm going to keep them quick. Oh, 37 Wilshire Drive, Londonderry, New Hampshire.
Got it recorded for a minute, so thank you.
No, got it. First of all, my perspective, looking at the reorganization plan, is it's pretty clear that if you vote in favor of this, you're voting to eliminate the position and fire the person, and you can hide it any way you want, you can call it anything you want, it results in a firing of the person we're all here speaking on behalf of. Second, regardless of what happens, I think, I hope that the town looks into the treatment of this person when she was apparently fired, or let out of the building a few weeks ago. I think that's a really important result, regardless of where you go with this. Third, it seems clear by the number of people here that the savings that you're going to get from this is way outweighed by the benefit to the town of keeping this person in this position, or another position. The only other thing I'm going to say, and I'm going to ask my fellow town members too, I would love to let Laura and whoever's here with her speak on her behalf, as opposed to us taking up any more time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the town of Londonderry? Hey, I'm trying.
Robert Longo, 42 Forest Street. Thank you, councilors, for your time, and again, I thank you for coming out during the last meeting. I know the weather was bad, but I appreciate it. I would like to see this council decline to vote in favor of the proposed reorganization plan. We saw an exchange at the last meeting between the council and the town manager, as the reorganization plan was discussed. And Mr. Chairman, you rightfully stated that you felt counsel was needed, as the matter was pushed to this week. But that does raise an alarm with me, because we needed to seek legal counsel for a reorganization plan drafted by a career attorney. Now, it has been outlined that there are benefits to having attorneys on staff in any organization to cover legal matters. And we have heard from members of the zoning committee, the planning department, that that has, for a long time, been a benefit here in town hall. So that raises questions for me, as a taxpayer, about billable hours for legal fees. All of this counsel that we are seeking outside of the building, I have good understanding of this, because I earn my, not salary, but I earn my compensation by billable hours as well. So that's very alarming to me, how much outside counsel we are not only seeking for this matter, but for everything going on in the planning department, while Laura Gandia is not there. Councilors, I, again, I urge you to decline to vote in favor of the proposed plan for reorganization. And Mr. Chairman, I would like to request, you've been very generous on our time, but I would like to request that you give us an extra fifteen minutes for public comment.
Now, what I'm doing right now is I'm tracking the ones that go over, and I'm certainly not going to cut people off, but I do have to keep the meeting moving.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm waiting to find out. Is there anyone else from the town of Londonderry? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up. Okay. I just had to get through that piece first.
Chris Gandia, 3 Chamberlain Drive, Litchfield, New Hampshire. I retired last year with over twenty-five years of service, working alongside incredible men and women of the Londonderry Police Department, who protect and serve this fantastic community. Tonight, I am here as the husband of Laura Gandia, and have come to cast light on the darkness that has surrounded her for not only the past two weeks, but for the last several months, as this goes much deeper than what was recently transpired in front of the town council's last meeting. Let me start by addressing the town manager's reorganizational plan that has been thrown on the table in complete haste, by asking the following questions on everyone's minds. Who thinks it was a good idea not to speak with members of the planning department, when considering a reorganization plan to get their working experience and operational input? Who thinks it was a good idea to suddenly attempt to terminate the associate planner's position, when the town planner's position continues to remain vacant? Who thinks this was really about saving money by removing the associate planner's position, yet the town manager fills the Assistant Town Manager, Economic Development Director position, with a salary and benefits that are substantially higher? Who thinks it was a good idea to immediately remove Laura from work without cause, just a few days before the Assistant Town Manager, the former town a few days before the Assistant Town Manager, the former town planner, leaves on vacation, knowing about upcoming meetings and administrative tasks that still need attention? Who thinks it was a good idea to tell Laura with absolutely no advance notice that her position was going to be potentially terminated by the town council vote within the next two business days? Deny her request to speak to Human Resources, physically escort her out of the building, instruct her not to return to work, and deny her access to her office? Who thinks that the town manager showed any dignity and respect to Laura's seven-plus years of unblemished and incredible service? Who actually believes the town manager when he claimed that this was about a position and not the person the night of the town council meeting on January 23rd, but then issues a trespass notice to both Laura and I three days later on January 26th? The real question is why? The answer to this question stems from several months ago when Laura stood up to the town manager in response to his unfair labor practices. This is when the well-documented, unbroken chain of oppression and extreme disregard for Laura's human dignity began. The town manager's proposed reorganization plan is nothing more than a poorly attempted disguise. The real plan that he's asking you to vote on tonight is indeed a retaliation plan to remove Laura from her position because of her unwillingness to compromise her integrity and professional service to this community. The truth shall now be self-evident. You may be wondering why I have these movies laid out in front of me here. These are actually movies from the Leach Library that Laura and I took out two days before the trespass notices were issued to us by the town manager. We are unable to return them as we have been indefinitely banned from coming to the Town Hall and surrounding town properties, which includes my former police department and the public library. These are not just unreturned movies, but in fact represent a tangible loss of our freedoms. I'll be finished by sharing the feelings I hold in my heart. The first is sorrow and the second is joy. You may wonder how I have opposing feelings. My sorrow extends to the town manager as I hold no anger or hatred in my heart, but rather disappointment of his actions. I actually worked very well with the town manager back when he was our police prosecutor and at one time held admiration for his knowledge and his character. When he first became appointed as a town manager, I had a conversation with Mike and expressed my confidence for the future of the town as I and others observe the potential for his leadership greatness. However, the town manager chose the wrong path, which led him astray of what could have been an incredible opportunity to serve this wonderful town with dignity, humility, commitment to community service by leading all the outstanding employees of the Town Hall who unfortunately now fear him. I'd like to end with joy. The adversity that the town major has brought upon Laura and I has not only strengthened our relationship as husband and wife, but allowed us to feel the incredible support by so many courageous employees of the Town Hall, businesses, developers, and citizens of this community as they come out to support us against this darkness. When I look behind me, all I see is light, the light of love and encouragement that we would have never experienced if it wasn't for the adversities that we have endured. For all those who attended last meeting in anticipation and those who spoke tonight, Laura and I sincerely thank you. We recognize your fortitude and your willingness to stand for the truth. As both Laura and I have served and protected this town during our careers, we are humbled that you are all now taking the position to serve and protect us. For that, we are grateful and we are filled with loving joy. May God bless everyone here tonight.
John Vogel, resident of Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman, I served the town for 12 years as the GIS manager. I never thought I'd be back under these circumstances, but I could tell you the finest day was when we brought Laura Gandia onboard. I mean that. The testimonies you've heard are true, every word of it. She's the, as fine as public servant as you'll find. So I object, of course, to the reorganization of the department and cutting the associate planner position. The irony, incredibly ironic, the irony tonight is that the last reorganization of the department took place to create the associate planner position under Chief Hart and Kevin Smith. The idea was simple, to structure the department around the major service areas they provide, those being the planning board, served by the town planner, the zoning board, served by the associate planner, the GIS, served by the GIS manager, and economic development, served by the town manager. The demands of each position are different and they require their own skill sets. And while there was often overlap in responsibilities, those overlaps occurred principally as administrative roles, such as the GIS manager serving on Heritage Commission. The town planner position demands a background and a skill set. I lost my place. The town planner position demands a background expertise in principles of community planning. The town manager makes memo, makes note of Laura's lack of a planning background, and that was by design. We already had a planner. The zoning board demands an understanding of planning principles, but more importantly, requires an objective background in process and interpretation of ordinances. And that's where you have the right candidate and the right job description for each position today in that department. Recall that the zoning board oversight used to be in the building department until it was moved to the current role. In that, in the position of the administrative planner, the associate planner, process timing and expert understanding of zoning and land use are critical. It is as different from the planning, from the town planner as the zoning board is from planning board. As you heard at the last meeting, the department is functioning appropriately and it sounds like they haven't missed a beat. The proposal before you seems to have been to provide a role for the Assistant Town Manager and it's clearly now driven by the needs of the planning department. After what you heard last week and tonight, you have to ask, what is the problem that you're trying to solve? The model that's in place has worked for a decade and it worked through one of the busiest periods of growth in Londonderry. You've had phenomenal people throughout the department over the years and they've made the town great and Laura is clearly, clearly one of them. So I ask you to take action tonight to keep the department as is and retain the associate planner position. Thank you for your time, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristen McCullough, 43 Forest Street here in Londonderry. I have been asked to read a letter that was given to me, written by Colleen Mayou, who was a previous employee of the planning department, if that's okay. Dear Councilmembers, I recently became aware of the proposed plan for the reorganization of the Planning and Economic Development Planning Department and submit this letter to provide additional context regarding the roles and responsibilities of the members of that, of that department. As the council is aware, I served as the Town Planner/Department Manager from April 2016 through May 2022. During that time, the town manager was the designated department head of the planning department and was also responsible for economic development initiatives within the town. The town planner served as department manager, a capacity which provided some administrative oversight function. I understand that the recent creation of the Assistant Town Manager slash Economic Development Director ATM EDD position has absorbed the economic development functions that were previously a town manager responsibility, in addition to the department manager responsibilities that were previously the function of the town planner. The addition of this position is a great opportunity to provide the planning department with direct management and to relieve the town manager of economic development responsibilities while improving support to businesses currently in or considering relocating to Londonderry. However, this position does not alleviate the significant demand for the services that are consistently provided on a day-to-day basis by the planning department staff, including the town planner and associate planner. It may be a conflict for the staff person responsible for economic development and business growth to also play a role in the review of significant land use applications. It is critical that there be a separation in duties between economic development and planning. In watching the presentation to the Town Council on January 23, the associate planner position is stated to be redundant and duplicative. These statements are grossly, these statements grossly misrepresent the importance of the role of each position in the planning department and the associate planner in particular. In the planning department, customers come in from, come in the form of taxpayers, business owners, developers, engineers, attorneys, current and future residents, the town's land use board members, the Town Council, and town departments and staff. Every member of the planning department plays a key role in assisting these customers in accomplishing the mission of the department. The associate planner position was described by the town manager as a support position with a solely administrative function. This description fails to recognize the actual role of the associate planner. The associate planner is responsible for managing applications made to the planning board, zoning board, and heritage commission, providing initial technical review of each application for completeness and adherence to the regulations, identifying items of concern, and escalating issues to the town planner. This initial technical review is key in ensuring a smooth process, not only for larger-scale projects that will require further extensive review by the town planner and town engineer, but also for the smaller projects, which though less complex, are likely to need additional support and guidance from the associate planner, as they are typically project proposals made by residents of the town, usually without their own professional representation. The associate planner also reviews legal documents, including easements, condominium declarations, and HOA documents, eliminating the need for review by outside legal counsel. Elimination of this position will reduce the efficiency of the project review process and further will shift additional administrative responsibilities onto the town planner, reducing the overall productivity and responsiveness of the town planner. In municipal government and in a planning department in particular, the other duties as assigned task in the job description represents a significant and often underestimated role. The associate planner is tasked with doing significant research in support of other town departments, including the assessing department, Department of Engineering and Environmental Services, and Building Code and Enforcement. The associate planner assists residents and applicants by conducting research on past land use decisions, deed histories, and legal matters relating to land use. The associate planner may spend hours daily responding to inquiries from residents, businesses, and board members, and is relied upon to provide well-researched and accurate guidance. The associate planner position requires a breadth of technical planning skill, knowledge of ordinances and regulations and state statutes, and plays a key role in ensuring that the town is in compliance with such. I have only a little bit more, sorry.
I understand.
I write this letter because I'm concerned that eliminating the associate planner position will negatively impact the level of service provided by the planning department and will not further the progress of the town. From a planning perspective, there are a number of initiatives which have been on the horizon, but were not able to be successfully implemented over the past several years in part due to workload. In addition to the necessary master plan update, which has yet to be initiated, other projects that had been identified as department goals which have not yet been implemented include technical updates to the subdivision regulations and site plan regulations, proposals for changes to commercial zoning, a much-needed update to the Route 102 and Route 28 overlay districts, preparation of an updated heritage commission lookback, lookbook, sorry, review and updates to the sign ordinance and updates to the multifamily housing ordinance. These projects will require devotion of a significant amount of time by all members of the planning department. Eliminating staff positions at this time would further limit the town's ability to advance these important projects and respond to the changing needs of the town. The Londonderry Town Council has prided itself on Londonderry leading the way. I encourage the Town Council to continue to lead the way without eliminating any of the staff positions that make the planning department team one that provides first-class service and support to all its customers. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Colleen Mayou, and she's of 153 Heather Hill Lane, Goffstown, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Morrison, 15 Rosiny Road. I've been asked to read a letter from Vernco Apple LLC dated February 2, 2023. Dear Londonderry Town Council, this letter is regarding Laura Gandia in the planning department. We understand the town is considering dropping the position of associate planner. We feel this would be a tremendous mistake. Laura was a vital resource to us during our three-year ordeal of repositioning of the Apple Tree Shopping Center. She helped with securing approval from the state for our pylon sign on Route 102. The pylon has been a tremendous asset to the center. In addition, there was a 10,000-square-foot strip of land in between Apple Tree and TD Bank that was owned by Shaw's or its successor, parentheses, meaning us. It had been in limbo with the town for many years due to an unbuilt roadway many years ago. Laura was the only one, parentheses, including our attorney's, parentheses, that was able to figure out this, to figure this out, thanks to her diligent research. We also worked with Laura and the engineering department when we were connecting the shopping center to town sewer. This enabled us to put in tenants like Troy's Kitchen, Extreme Craze, Planet Fitness, Luciano's, Jersey Mike's, Game Changer Sports Bar, et cetera. Laura has been instrumental in the redevelopment of Apple Tree, which, quite frankly, was a mess when we first purchased it in June of 2018. Thank you for your time and I hope you reconsider eliminating this vital position in the town of Londonderry. Sincerely, George Vernet III, manager and authorized person.
All right, folks, we're nearing the end of public comment.
I was at the emergency room at Elliot Hospital, watching this. I just want to say.
Well, just to let you know, I spent the afternoon at the CMC Emergency Hospital. So, you know, I understand. I mean, nothing moves quickly at emergency.
So any name and address?
You would think things would be an emergency at emergency, right?
Well, I'm not, I'm not in the mood for jokes right now.
So, and I need your name and address.
Ann Champ, 28 Wedger Drive. I had something I was going to say, but I unfortunately left it at home before I went to the hospital. But I just want to say, think hard about this. You've heard from everybody, what a responsible, intelligent, wonderful employee you have. And what's been done so far has created some headlines I wouldn't want to see for any town. And also letters to the editor. Think about what that's saying to the community in Londonderry and the state at large, how we treat our employees. We're looking for a town planner. You think she wants to, she or he would want to come into this mess and be treated like that? Any town employee might be up for that, too. Who knows? Without doing a damn thing wrong. This isn't right. We've all talked about Laura, what a wonderful person she is, and she is. But the amazing job she's done for this town has been recognized by everyone. And I hope the town manager can see that in his heart, that maybe he was wrong about it. When I met Mr. Malaguti, I thought he was a, would be fine, wonderful for the town manager's position. But this gives me great pause to think, maybe I wasn't correct. And I hope he reviews and goes through an I just want to say one thing else. I was looking over the proposal, and I noticed that one of the employees in the Planning Department, the land use, I think it's assistant, she's only part-time. She's not a full-time employee. She only works 28% of the, 28 hours a week, supposedly according to the contract, because it was reduced from 40 hours in 2014. And of course, with Kelly Karen becoming Town Assistant Town Manager and Economic Development Director, she wouldn't be spending a good chunk of her time working on plans. So basically, by adding what's left of Kelly's time in the Planning Department and the portion of time that the land use assistant is on her job, that would probably equal one person. So in effect, we only have four, four employees, four full employees in that department, not five. Part of the, I think Kelly's probably pay should come from the Town Manager's job, Town Manager's Department, because that's who she's working with. Also, economic development. Didn't the Town Manager, wasn't he headed that for a time, Mr. Smith? I thought he was. So that's really functions of the Town Manager and that department. So if the money stays there for people who work for the Town Manager in some capacity, and separate that from the money that's in the Planning Department that goes for those, quote, "four employees," it should even out. So you're really not, you don't have five people in the, in the Planning Department. You only have four, essentially. Thank you, Mr. Malaguti, for listening to me tonight. But I hope you'll take it hard that...
Trust me.
Okay, sorry, I apologize. I'm just used to calling a mic and, you know...
I understand.
I thank you all for listening, and I hope you not only vote with your head but with your heart, too, because you're talking about a wonderful employee of this town of Londonderry. I want to look you all in your eyes to make sure you understand all the people, what they're saying, all the people and past employees who no longer live in this town, the high esteem that Laura has held to. Please, think about that before you vote, and I appreciate you give me the time tonight.
Thank you. So Ms. Gandia, if you're going to speak, please don't repeat everything from the last meeting.
I've actually shortened up everything in here.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
As you know, my name is Laura Gandia. I'm the Associate Planner for the town of Londonderry. I'm speaking to you tonight to ask that you oppose the proposed reorganization plan. The last two weeks have been nothing short of surreal. The amount of astonishment and disbelief has been astounding to hear that the way I was treated and escorted out of the building is policy is not true, 100% not true. A former employee who was, according to the town, terminated just recently, was not escorted out of the building and was allowed to retrieve her belongings. I've not been terminated. I was escorted out. That's not policy. That is not true. Also...
Excuse me just one minute. Chief, could you come here for a minute? I apologize. I'm sorry, I asked him to check on something that's outside.
Can I continue?
Has nothing to do with this meeting. Please, please proceed.
Also, being served by the Town Manager with a no trespass order was shocking, to say the least. And for the Town Manager to serve my husband with a no trespass order is unconscionable, egregious, and shocks the conscience. However, the ability of the community members to see the truth and recognize my value and the value of the Associate Planner position has been invaluable. And this no trespass order that I had basically read that the Town Manager was giving me the privilege to attend this meeting tonight. Other than that, I was not allowed, but he was giving me a privilege to attend a public town meeting. I would like to thank the Town Council for hitting pause, the pause button on the January 23 meeting, to allow proper time for discernment of the Town Manager's proposed plan. As you are aware, the Town Council is charged in approving any reorganization plan presented by the Town Manager. This is in place to act as a system of checks and balances between you, the Town Manager, and the people you are voted to represent. The Town Manager is given the day-to-day management of the town and its affairs, but when it comes to changing the overall structure of the town, the town government, and the foundation to which it operates, this is where the Town Council plays a critical and very important role. The analysis here is not for the Town Council to defer to the Town Manager's judgment alone. If that was the case, then the reorganization plan would not need your approval. This is for you and you alone to decide based on the wisdom, if any, behind the proposed reorganization plan. This is where you are charged with exercising your own independent judgment, discernment as to whether or not this plan meets the needs of the town and is in its best interest. The proposed reorganization plan should highlight an in-depth knowledge of the runnings of the department, and this plan does not. You heard the letter, you had the letter read from former Town Planner Colleen Mayu, who served this town adamantly for six years. This plan is not what the town is, needs. Not once was I or any other member of the department spoke to about the runnings of the department by the Town Manager or the Assistant Town Manager. Nobody went to me, asked me what I do day-to-day. The Assistant Town Manager has only been here since July. There was no conversations with me, the land use assistant, or the GES manager, as to what actually happens in the Town Planning Department. The plan lacks the proper insight and knowledge to the runnings of the department, and this is where you, the Town Council, need to pause, reflect, and discern as to whether or not this plan is proper and in the best interest of the town. The plan also comments on the tax savings associated with the plan. Again, does 0.0038% of the overall town budget represent a significant tax savings to the town? And after all you heard about the Associate Planner position, does the elimination of this position, my position, make the department more efficient and improve the delivery of service to the public? The answer is very clear and simple, and the answer is no. And I ask that you vote no to the proposed reorganization plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, public comment is now closed. Mr. Town Manager, you're a barred attorney in the state of New Hampshire, right?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Are you allowed to give the Town Council legal advice?
No, my contract provides that, that I am not practicing law to the extent I'm interacting with the Town Council.
So, we have a town attorney that we ask for legal advice?
Correct.
Okay. So in some cases, when the attorney is employed by the town, we do still seek outside counsel because that's how the legal system works?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to get clarification on that. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, some people had asked about 4.8. Councilor Green had brought up 4.8, and we did confer with legal counsel, and he advised us that 4.8 did not apply. What applies in this is, in following the charter, is sections 8.9 and 8.10 under the reorganization plan. So the Town Manager did follow the plan in accordance with the charter, the way that it is mapped out from the charter that was originally created in 1996, and amended multiple For those of you that haven't read the charter, it really is our guideline to what we do. I'm going to move away from public comment, which is now closed, to new business. Proposed plan of reorganization, planning and economic development department. Open it up to the council. What do you want to do?
I'm going to state what I said last time. I think reorganization is great when it's done properly. I don't believe, as I said last time, that this was done correctly, so I, as one counselor, as I said last time, am not for this. And I guess I'd just like to make a motion to, I guess, null and void the request.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion dies with no second. How would the council like to proceed?
I have something I'd like to say, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
So as I mentioned last meeting, governing is never easy. Sometimes it's required to make extremely difficult decisions. I believe when we make decisions, we're in one of three states of minds. First state of mind is your logic mind. With this, it's very black and white, all facts, no emotions. You look at things just how it is. The second state of mind is emotional-minded. That is what, as it seems, purely emotion. There's little facts, no logic, just thoughts and feelings. The third is wise-minded. You see, this mindset's somewhat unique. It pays respects to the previously mentioned states of mind, where it's a mixture of both, logic, looking at the facts, and acknowledging and respecting your emotions. During our last meeting, we heard a lot from, during public comment, and I feel that I simply could not make a decision without processing everything and being in that wise state of mind, as I mentioned earlier. If I were to proceed with this decision, I knew it wouldn't be fair to anyone affected by this decision or the public who spoke. And to be honest, my emotional silo was overflowing. Over the past two weeks, I've devoted a considerable amount of thought and time to this, and I'm prepared to make a decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make some comments.
Please proceed.
The Town Council, whether the audience agrees with me or not, is bound by certain criteria. And one of the criterias that we set policy, there's nothing in the Town Charter that indicates that we get involved with HR issues or we get involved with day-in-day operations, period. Like Chad said, there's a lot of emotion in this room. I understand that. But I have to look at it, and I'm very cognizant of the fact that I have to go by the Town Charter. If people don't like the Town Charter, by all means, change it. But I have to look at the facts, and I have to be guided by the Town Charter. So I've looked at it, I've listened to what you've said. There's about 100 people in this room, some of my friends. I may lose some friends. We can agree to disagree. It's a tough decision. But based on what I'm capable of doing under the Charter, I have to take the personalities out of it. This is a reorganization that comes from the Town Manager. He has the right to do it. I am only looking at the black and white and solid. I hear what you're saying. I cannot say that every time I've gone to Laura, she's given me what I wanted, and very professional, and she has. And she has a right to that. But we're bound by the Town Charter. And this isn't, you don't like it, that's fine. It's not a scapegoat, it's the fact. Take a look at it. I can't get involved with personnel. I don't know what's going on day in and day out with the personnel of the town. That's not my job. And it's tough. I've known Laura, and maybe after tonight, we just may not talk. They're great people, don't get me wrong. But I'm looking at what the Town Charter says, that we're responsible for, and based on that, I will make a motion to approve the Town Manager's reorganization as written.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
I won't entertain point of order, but I will absolutely entertain any discussion. Can I ask for, can I ask for a second first?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. I just wanted to have an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely.
Okay, so as everybody understood last time, there were proceedings that went on here, and there were things that were kind of halted, and I was probably one of the people that did that, because I've been here for 12 years, all right? There's been people in and out of this board, and I just thought that we needed to have a timeout. We needed to take a break and understand all the new testimony and all the things that we thought might be heading in one direction, and the things that we heard, and some of the testimony from some of the people that were out in the audience last time caused question. So again, I was the one who asked for the, for the timeout, and thank you for the chairman for extending it to this meeting. My feeling is, if this was about Laura, I would say 100%, let's not do what has been proposed. It's, Laura's been here for seven of the 12 years that I've been around. The Planning Department has functioned in an unbelievable manner all the time, and this is all, you know, all I can do is tell the truth. You know, I'm here to tell the truth, and I'm here to kind of put it all out there and explain to you how I feel. In all seven years, we've just continued to produce and go forward. So if this was a question about, as my other counselor said, about the person, then as far as a human being, for myself and all the interactions I've had with her, this wouldn't be a question as to what I would do. But the problem is, is that I'm a Town Councilor, and the Town Council is, what I learned was that it's not about the particular person, it's not about that particular individual that does it, it's about the Charter, it's about exactly this question, whether that the Town Manager can do a reorganization. This is in the Town Manager's purview to do it, okay? We can sit up here and say yes or no to the structure of that, okay? We're not saying yes or no to the person. Very, very clear. I had an issue, and everybody talks about, I think you guys talked about, putting your emotion into it. You know, I'm a human, okay? Yeah, I'm elected an official, right? But I'm a human, too. So I let my emotions take, you know, hold of me, and I spoke to the Town Manager and said to the Town Manager, I pay you to do this. And it's true, I do, personnel. He didn't ask me about that. He asked me about the structure of the town. He asked, he's asking permission for us to restructure the savings of a position that is duplicative. So it's not about hiding, I find, I find some of the comments appalling. It's not about hiding behind the Charter, it's about following the laws and regulations. I wasn't 100% sure. That's why we got attorneys, attorneys to talk about it and to guide us. I'm not an attorney, I have to ask questions about it, okay? So this is not about hiding behind it, all right? This is about the specific Charter structure. Town Planner position's open, okay? That's, people can do all they want, they can apply to that if they like to. It's open. But the way that this has been laid out, the specific way that this has been laid out, those two, that position now with the Town Assistant Manager is not needed. If you really, really look at it, and you, this is outsiders looking in, and I can get tomatoes thrown at me all you want, and I understand that this is not a popular thing. But again, you have to, in this, it's very, very difficult, but you have to separate what the question is that's being asked. It's not about Laura, it's not about the position of the person. I do not have any authority at all whatsoever to promote that person to a different position or tell the Town Manager to do something different. I can only talk about what the Charter allows me to talk about. It's very frustrating, because I want to, I want to, if I say, say as an example right now, if I say no, I don't want this to go through, and three other people say yes, my vote doesn't matter, okay? So the thing is, is that you've already heard, people want to take the way that they're supposed to take it, and the way we've actually sworn a Bible that we would actually defend and move the Charter forward, and abide, go with the laws and regulations of the town, that's the Charter. So my hands, again, you guys can think it's completely, I'm hiding behind it, but my hands are absolutely tied in the situation, okay? I could say no, but then there's three other votes that could say yes, all right? So I want you guys to understand that. Things we will address, as long as I'm a council... Things we will address, as long as I'm a councillor?
Order, please, order.
Things that we will address, as long as a councillor in here, is that the way people are treated, okay? And, but again, I can't direct people, I can't direct the town manager what to do with the personnel. I can only make decisions on the structure of the town. So, again, maybe people aren't going to understand that, but that's what I have to do as a town councillor.
I'm going to speak last, if you want to speak again.
Yeah, I do. I just want to say one thing.
That's why I'm looking at you.
Thank you, John. I just want to say one thing. I believe you are hiding behind the charter, Joe, and everybody else, because this has nothing to do with Laura. This has to do with Londonderry's reputation about doing a good job and getting things done. We heard from people who used to work there and what was going on. So, those experts who still work in that kind of world, no more than the town manager when it comes to planning and planning departments. You heard what they had to say. It had nothing to do with Laura. It had to do with the position. And to say that it's the town charter, then why are we here voting on it? If he had sole right to do whatever he wanted to do, this question would not be before us. So, don't say it is about that. So, don't hide behind it. Say the truth. You just don't want, you want an excuse to make this decision.
You know, Deb, I disagree with you.
You can disagree with me. I said my piece.
Believe me, I disagree with you.
I just wanted people to understand that we wouldn't be voting on it if it was in a violation of the town charter.
As a town councillor, can you get involved in personnel? Can you get involved in HR under the charter?
I can't come into-
I just asked the question, yes or no?
No, because you're taking it out of context.
I'm not taking it out of context.
Yes, you are.
Read the charter.
I have.
I'm the last person to hide, trust me.
And it says to the day-to-day. That means coming in here and saying, "You know what, Laura? Don't answer the phone that way. You know what, Mike? You need to go do this." Or, "We should do this this way." Coming into their departments and telling them how to do their job is us intervening. Or saying, "You need to do something." That is not what we're doing here. We're changing the way things are done in the town hall. And the reason we have to vote on it, Jim, if it wasn't, if we were interfered, then we would have to vote on every single thing that went on in town hall. Mike would have to come to us every single time and say, "Deb," or "Councillor, we need to vote on hiring this person." "Oh, we need to hire," no, this is one specific thing. And why is it here? Even the lawyer said, "We have to make a decision on whether or not this is the best thing for the town of Londonderry to move forward." It doesn't say-
Gentlemen, we are deliberating. If you continue to interrupt us while we are deliberating, I will clear the room.
So, anyway, it doesn't say that we are obligated to say yes. It just says we have to vote on it and whether we feel it is the best thing for this town. And I personally do not think it's the best thing for this town at this point in time. You know, the contract is good until whatever. Maybe we needed to have looked at things to June or something. I heard somebody, maybe it's July, I don't know. But she's, it's in the budget. So, why this is being rushed through is beyond me. Why a conversation wasn't had that said, "Okay, look, this is what we need to do. How do you want to handle it?" And it could have been handled so eloquently, so professionally. And it probably, at that point in time, we said, "We're going to look at it. We're going to gradually wean it out. We're going to give Laura an opportunity to train the people that are there and the jobs, the tasks that need to be done, that she used to do." Not assume they know what to do because it's cut off abruptly. You were transitioning. This wasn't a bad behavior policy. There was no complaints. So, therefore, you wanted to transition from one to another. And that's how it should have been handled. And it wasn't. And that's my opinion. And I know, I'm the sole vote yet again, but that's it, John. You can say what you want.
Well, I wanted to respond to that. She attacked me over it, so.
Go ahead, let him.
You're good?
I'm good right now.
All right, so, what I would like to be able to see is, is that we have cordial conversations. So, please proceed.
So, the comment about me saying that I have to be, I have to say yes on things. It's not, I didn't say yes. I said, "You have to," all the things that you just talked about is about personnel. All about personnel. So, we're not allowed, it's in the charter, you can look at it. We're not allowed to rule on personnel. Everything you just talked about was personnel matters.
We're not ruling on personnel. We're ruling on a position.
Right, and that's what we're talking about.
It's a huge difference, Joe.
Okay, so, give me reasons why this specific position-
We have discussion, there is a motion on the floor.
That is what we're talking about. It's not the personnel part of it.
Right, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the position.
Okay.
You should be training someone to fill in for that. You don't want to leave a void in that department. You're down a person, actually do, until we find a planner. That's a vital department. And it's been said by John Vogel, Colleen Mayhew, people who have been in that industry and that, that's their career, their professional career for years. They told us that it was necessary to have someone. They, yeah, Laura does a good job at it. Take that out of it. I don't care if it was Joe Banana sitting in that position. The fact is, they, these people said that position is necessary. They reorganized to create that position because of the overload, because of the work that needed to be done. When somebody's out for a long period of time, they needed somebody to be able to fill in there with a heavy workload. They needed people. I listened to what they said was needed for that position to be done and done well. If you want to have it done not well and deal with the ramifications, as I believe Mr. Vogel said, or was, it might have been, Colleen, that she saves us a lot of money with legal, catching things before they were there.
So, let me ask you a question then. A real easy question.
Yes, sir.
So, you have, you have the assistant town manager, right? That used to be in the HR department. Now, you have them in that department, okay? You have an extra, that extra person now is now working in that department, leading the department.
Saying someone from HR is now working in planning?
No, the last town manager, the last town assistant manager worked-
You're talking about Lisa.
Lisa, right, and she also worked in the HR department.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, now we have a different assistant town manager.
Yeah.
She's now working as a department lead in the planning department, right? And we have a planning, a planner that, planning position that's open. Am I right?
Yeah.
So, with the planner position open, and there's another full-time person that's working, the assistant town manager, that, those two positions together will do more than cover the associate planner position.
No, because I believe there's a conflict of interest with the planner being in economic development. You have somebody seducing businesses to come here and then looking at their plans? That's not a conflict of interest? That's not a setup for a lawsuit?
We don't seduce anybody.
Well, entice, entice, intrigue, convince, use a word.
Let's be, let's understand that we follow the guidelines and follow the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
But you're still, it's still a conflict to me.
So, we brought, so we brought that, a new person in to cover that void in the HR department, right? And so, now there's that much more payroll, that much more of a position that's now in that department. So, we're more focused on the planner.
I understand what happened. I understand how it transpired. I do not believe that, in my heart of hearts, and I'll wash my hands of it. I hope something, I hope nothing happens, but I know something will.
Okay, so, and then last thing I'll say is that you have this position that's open there, and nobody's applied for it. If that particular person wanted that position, nobody's applied for that.
Why?
I have no idea. You have to ask that person.
That's a great question.
So, the point, so, the point was, and I said very clearly, that person didn't apply for it, okay? So, that position's open.
I'd like a question answered. Maybe the town manager can help me. How many people applied for the planning position that Kelly Curran, Curran, no. Karen, excuse me. Kelly Karen now is out of. How many people applied when she applied?
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to-
How many people applied? She's asking how many people applied when-
Yeah, like when Kelly came in, like how many of them came in?
When Miss Karen applied.
Three.
There were three? And have you gone back to any of those three?
That's my best memory. It was, it was six months ago, but I believe it was three.
Okay, so, let's move on.
Okay, three, including her or three?
Including her.
So, two.
Well, she applied as well.
So, that's three, yeah.
Moving on.
Yep.
Motion on the floor. Anything else?
Nope.
So, I guess I get to speak last. You know, so, I've been doing this 23 years. It's been some easy decisions, been some hard decisions. But you always try to follow the guidelines. For me, it's, you know, some of you know that, you know, seven years ago, I had surgery for cancer. Recently, I had 38 rounds of radiation. So, you look at it and you say, you know, people's lives are affected. Things are personal. You know, my father always said to me, he says, you know, he says, "You work hard at your job and everything else and say, 'Is it personal?'" "Yes, of course it's personal. You work hard at it. You do hard things." You know, it's not that anybody, you know, doesn't feel emotion towards what was, took place and what's been displayed over the last few weeks. But, you know, we're elected. We're in a difficult position where, you know, we have to make the final decision. That's, that's part of, that's part of what you sign up for. So, I certainly, you know, some of you may or may not know, Laura Gandy and I share the same birthday. I mean, I've known Laura Gandy a long time. She's a nice person. And as the other councillors have said, it's not about her. So, with that, I'll call for the vote.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Just a quick question. If three people are already going to be, are going to be voting to do this, and two other people don't vote for it, what happens?
I'm going to call for the vote. All councillors need to vote. That's what you signed up for. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries.
What's the count?
Well, I'm going to have to agree and go with 4-1. Thank you for attending, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be moving on to the next item.
I have order 2023-01. Mr. Wally.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, town councillors, town manager. Coming for you tonight to ask for a second allocation for winter maintenance funding out of the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund. The first allocation was for $17,500, as we did in order last year as well. We are nearing the approach of exhausting that funding allocation and therefore respectfully request $17,500 out of the, for winter maintenance for the town facilities.
So, motion to approve.
So, moved.
Second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wally.
Thank you.
Tanya Christian, acquisition of property on West Road. Ma'am, you're welcome to sit up here, since it does concern your property. I'm going to have the town manager present it, though. I'm going to have the town manager present the dialogue.
So, I, but I sit here?
You're welcome to sit there.
Thank you. I need a chair.
I'm not clear on what you and the town manager discuss, so I'm just going to go ahead and have you there so that he can talk to you.
Perfect.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as Ms. Christian said when she came up earlier, she owns property at 103 West Road and may have had a misunderstanding with her seller about what the extent of her property really was. You can see that she is adjacent to this large wetlands complex area and also directly across from the West Road Fields.
Okay.
We have been in discussions with her and her attorney for some time, and her request, as she said earlier, was to get from the town a quick claim deed for property adjacent to hers that could possibly be owned by the town, but likely isn't. And I'll get to that more in just a moment. As I said, she purchased this property. I don't recall exactly when. She could provide more information about that. And was under the impression that she owned more of it than is currently depicted here. You can see that it is a largely wet parcel. There is a small, I'll call it a buildable area, but without adjacent land, it probably isn't buildable based on lack of frontage and lot size or usable area. And she proceeded to do some work over the property line. And we told her, and DES told her that we questioned whether she owned that area, I think is correct. She engaged counsel, and counsel did a title on the property, on her property and on the adjacent property, and determined that the title is very unclear as far as who owns this adjacent area. The, I think the town's interest, and I, I don't have a detailed understanding of the title report.
I have a question for you. This piece of property here, that's at the entrance of West Road there, right?
Yes, it's true.
And she owns the home that's there that I see pictured?
So, that's not actually a home. I'll let her describe-
Is that a, is that the, the area where there was a trailer?
Correct.
And there was, did your dad originally buy this?
No, I have no relation to him whatsoever.
Okay, I'm just trying to get some context.
It was a for sale by owner.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, should I speak?
Please, absolutely. We didn't really get a lot of context around this. That's why I would like you to participate, so we can understand.
I'd like that. It was a for sale by owner, and the gentleman explained to me that it went all the way up to the Nessunkeek Brook. And I just, at the time, when I looked on the tax map of Londonderry, the GIS clearly said that the tax map for the 008005 or whatever my tax lot is, went to the Nessunkeek. I think I have that right here, if you'd like me to approach and-
Can we get some clarity here, just so I understand it?
Sure, yeah, thank you. So, we understand.
About this property here?
So, that is a property that is, right at this time, a blank lot. There isn't even a tax number on it.
Now, is that, is that the property that, that shed is on or something?
Yes.
And it's got, and there's a trailer in there?
Yes.
And he put that in there like 10 years ago or something?
Yes.
Okay.
You're right, John. Okay.
Okay, now, now, do you think you bought that land?
That is the impression that I was under. And as you can see, I bought it in 2017, but you can see that it's actually plotted at the top. That this whole piece, the Nessunkeek, yeah.
Here, over here and back this way.
It's like a diamond shape. Well, the piece to the north of the Nessunkeek is actually Londonderry property. But this whole diamond area up to the Nessunkeek is, was plotted on the tax map at the time of purchase as one large parcel. And then I went to go get a dredging document from DES.
Yeah.
And he said, "No, John, you can't do that because you're too close to the adjacent property." I said, "What are you talking about?" And he explained that, that, I didn't even, I mean, I got online and realized, wow, there's this mine that wasn't there before.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask you to go back over there, but thank you. Thank you for clearing up.
One other thing for clarity.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the property we're talking about right here.
Right.
And question, right? Is this wetland?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's all wetland?
You couldn't even put a mailbox in it.
Well, there may be some, I mean, I'm just looking at it here, but out front, it looks like-
It got really dry a week ago.
Yeah, exactly, in the summer.
If we had a record drought.
Yeah.
It's also all in the buffer, just-
It's all what?
That portion that dry would be considered the buffer area as well.
Right, this is, this is a major named wetland.
Yeah.
A hundred-foot buffer. A hundred-foot buffer?
Yes.
But what, you know?
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to ask the same, that Jim was just kind of on the same idea. So what would be the interest of wetlands? I mean, I guess I'm missing that part of it, maybe I just, what would be your interest of, of making that part of your land if you couldn't do anything with it anyway? What's the?
The sun sets there. It's very sunny.
I guess if we could, if nothing could be built there and we weren't going to be putting anything there, what's the different, I mean, I'm just trying to, and it's taxable land too, right?
Yeah, and then I would be paying the taxes on it.
I mean, for us, given it to the, and you paying higher taxes, I mean, it kind of makes sense, but I mean, you know, just, but I don't, why would you, if you, why would you do it, I guess, I'm missing it.
Because currently, I can't get any permits to do what I need to build because there, that line is right there and I can't, I need to do a dredging film.
So she does have an interest in, in building, I think.
I just wanted to clarify because it's, okay, if we're not, not any good to anybody, why would you want it?
It is pretty too, sorry.
No, it's, hey, no, thank you.
Anything? I, I guess, so we don't know who owns this land at all. The title. It strikes me as odd.
It's not odd. Well, first of all.
No, it's odd.
It, it would be odd if it were prime buildable land, I would agree with you. But because it's wetland and nobody has wanted it necessarily over the years.
But someone had to own it originally.
I own it.
Everything is.
Just to buy it from me.
Charles heard.
Owned by the town or. So what it sounds like is, is some, somebody put a structure there without a permit and basically tried to take the land. So how much land are we talking about that we're kind of giving to her?
It's unclear. This is a, this is a, I mean, well, you can see, this is a lot of record here, right? It is owned by the town. I do not, I do, just for comparison purposes, in terms of like figuring out what the parcel, what the parcel of unknown ownership might look like, I think it's fair to say that it would be something roughly in between the green and the blue. We're at a, we're at a preliminary, how much is that?
Like how much acreage?
Comparing it to.
Mine, mine is eight acres, the one above, I think, is two and a half-ish.
Above, where the town was?
Right.
Yeah, the triangular.
The town owns two and a half, and so in the middle, looks like.
I think it's about five acres.
Five or six?
The assistant town manager says it's about five acres. But what I can tell you is, so we're at a very preliminary stage and so we're, you know, if, I'm looking for consensus from the council, yes, we want to explore this, no, we don't. There are a couple of things, and, and if, if the answer is yes, clearly, there's some additional work that needs to be done. The town's interests, I think, are twofold. One is, it is true that this property is not currently being taxed to anyone. It is also the case that even if it were conveyed to Ms. Christian and, and put on the tax rolls, I, I can't ima, I don't, I can't imagine we're talking about huge tax dollars into the town based on the fact that most of this property is not usable. I think the town's additional interest is, is this. This is important, prime wetland. And so if the council is, is interested in entertaining this, one, either as an accommodation to Ms. Christian, two, in order to increase our tax revenues, even if, you know, slightly, then there needs to be some restrictions placed on this transfer to protect this important wetland.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on that?
Of course. So, I'm sorry, Deb, I didn't see you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, please, go first.
All right, thank you. I just want to finish while, my train of thought that we were on mic.
I'm sorry to have interrupted, I.
No, no, no. So do we know who owns from here back?
Yeah.
That's, I think, Town of Londonderry as well. A Litchfield is right on the very westerly line.
It's not, it's not.
It's not clear? I mean, like, I know when you go to Google Maps.
Yeah, there we go.
I think that's London, that's Londonderry property as well, isn't it?
It's a little sluggish for some reason, I clicked on it. Yeah, I, I did click on it. I, I, this must be the Litchfield line right here, that's why that's not activated.
That is, that is the Litchfield line, yes, the westerly.
So that's the Litchfield line?
Yes.
Geez Louise.
Stop touching it.
Oh, geez, God.
And so, in the front here, how much frontage was there?
Currently, I have like 124 feet.
Not you, between the town and the town property and the, the piece she's looking to acquire.
Mike, scan out again and put the town property line in there, will you please?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Put this line in here and put that line.
I want to say about, probably.
Put the lines up, please.
There you go.
Get out of the way. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is right here.
About 200 feet.
That's 200 feet?
About 200 feet, because I want to say it's about 300.
And this looks all dry to me from here to here. So that's got to be at least four to five acres of buildable land that you could put to houses in.
It's not dry.
Stay out of them. Well, the problem is, you don't have the 180 feet of frontage.
I can't even get a surveyor to go and walk it for me.
Only need 150 there, I thought you needed 150.
You only need 150 for frontage, so if you have 200, well, yeah, I guess.
I only have 124, though.
Got a sight distance problem there, too, on that turn.
So, so what, so what I was going to say was, so what I was going to say to you guys was, council, what I was going to say to, to that, all right, instead of that big five-acre lot, you, you talked about, well, you want to build something on your lot, right? So how much do you need of that to allow it to be, you know, a buildable for you? So in other words, we don't know who the heck owns the five, five acres, but it could be that you need only a quarter of an acre or a half of an acre of that to make everything just for you.
And I, I have actually considered that, probably to at least, say, another 50 to 70 feet or something along the road.
That could be a good compromise too, I think, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That, to me, is a healthy compromise.
Yeah.
What's the cleanest way to handle this?
If, if, if there was like a line that went in, because there's so many jagged lines up there too, and I am really having a difficult time getting a surveyor.
Kind of like this?
I know, I was thinking more like from the road to make, so there's two, yeah, go up and now go back down to the middle-ish, the big green, yeah, kind of that direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let me ask the town manager a question. So, Mr. Town Manager, what you're asking for from the council tonight is, will we entertain a quick claim deed for this, however it works out?
Right, is this something that you'd, you'd even be interested in accommodating? Because, one, my bottom line on this is, the town should not have to go out of pocket to facilitate this. If the town is interested, if the council's interested in considering this, there are, I, I believe, going to be things that we need to do to assure ourselves, one, the state of the title, two, it sounds like we're talking about something less than a lot of record that isn't even a lot of record right now, and so we're talking about creating like a legal lot or, or adjusting her lot line into that area, which, I, I want to talk this through with, with the attorney.
Would be costly.
Is problematic because.
She would still have to go to the planning board, she'd have to do a lot line adjustment and go through the process. What you're asking us tonight is, is that, are we okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
So I can, yeah, I can answer from, from one council. I'm okay, I'm okay with exploring it, right?
That's what we're saying.
Well, but the thing is, is that I'm only okay with exploring it once we know who owns the, that's step one.
Let's find out who owns the property.
We've got to find out who owns it first, because how are we supposed to give you something we don't even have?
Well, I mean, I could tell you.
That's why I hired a lawyer. Exactly, I, I absolutely agree with you, because I would ask for way more.
The other thing too, that we have to take into consideration, Joe, is, is, it's a watershed.
If you have answers that can help us, that would be great.
And I'm sure the Conservation Committee, you will probably want to comment on that, it's a watershed.
But that's, but that's my point, so.
Name and address, sir.
John Ferrer, 58 Heavy Road. This maybe will help and maybe Mr. Malaguti might help you. So, piece of property, I was on, I'm going to date myself, the field committee back in the 70s. We went through the school and stuff like that, and then when the West Properties came up, we looked into this. At that point in time, I was told, and I can give you some background on this, that was deemed wetlands and it was also deemed greenland. Remember what the greenland was, we're back in the 70s? Okay, so.
Still in high school.
I graduated from high school in 1978, I don't remember, you know, much other than what they tried to teach me.
I was a kid.
So basically, the development was going so fast, the state decreed that the developers had to give up, it was a percentage, so if you built 10 lots.
You had to swap.
You had to give up one acre to the town for greenland.
Gotcha.
That's now illegal, by the way.
Right, in 1982.
But that's actually how we got to the theory of having the musk wash, but okay, now I understand.
Right, I do understand that.
All right, now I understand.
In 1982, as Mr. Malaguti said, the State Supreme Court deemed that illegal. I think that was left behind because what, and he, he's absolutely right, for example, the land on Charlie Colane, a person decided to buy the property behind us, the town approved it, but they put a covenant on 12 and a half acres that he could only develop three acres for his house and never develop anything else. So that is a consideration that you might want to do and go that way. I'll be honest with you, we could not find who owned that property back in 1977.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Chad, you weren't.
I think Goldugu.
So what, so what, so what this sounds like is, is that.
God.
The council needs to give the town manager the authority to do some homework and find out what we can and we can't do.
Right.
Yet the town council is supportive of the process.
Yes.
Is that, is that the consensus you're looking for? I know there's a lot of other moving cases.
Yeah, I would say this, I think reasonable people could go either way on this. I think that there are, there are concerns about this, this really critical, what I understand to be a really critical wildlife and water quality area. On the other hand, I, I certainly feel for Ms. Christian and the dilemma that she's in. So, yes, I mean, I'm looking for the council's consensus one way or the other, but like I said, I, I, it's not a, an easy case one way or the other.
Can I frame this, Mr. Jim?
And one, one other thing, if she puts a quick, I can't even say the word is, claim on it, and there's a background check to see if there's nobody owns the property and there is no objection, I think she automatically gets it, is that correct?
So that, that's correct. So the mechanism here that, that Ms. Christian's lawyer is proposing is that the town give Ms. Christian a quick claim deed or a deed with no covenants. Basically, a deed that says, if we have anything over here, you can have it. If we don't, then it's a piece of paper. That would give her, her attorney believes, standing to bring a quiet title action, which presumably, based on the title search that her attorney commissioned, concluding that ownership of this parcel is inconclusive, presumably, nobody else would come forward and say, with a better claim of title. Is it, and the only reason I would, I would, I wouldn't have a problem with that is because the town's literally not giving up anything. We're not making representations about, yes, we own this, she can't come back and sue us if, if it turns out that we don't own it. And so that, that would be the mechanism that.
You can put a covenants on the transfer, that I know.
Correct, we, we could say, you know, there's no building within X number of feet of.
Exactly, give her the 500 feet she needs and then rest is greenland restricted.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just a, just a quick.
How about?
So my, yeah, so my, you know, and, and I don't mean to make this more difficult for you, but for me, I, I really, we definitely have to find out who, who owns this, I think, and if, I can't under, there's no way you can tell me that nobody owns it, doesn't make any sense, there's no, there's no, there's nothing in my mind that could say that.
I know, right.
So, 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 yeah, what's that?
They've hills.
Yeah, no, but I'm, exactly, yeah, but so, once we do, I think that, in my opinion, guys, council, I think that this is a very, very important piece of property. So why can't we take care, and everybody's told us that, so why can't we take care of both scenarios? Why can't we preserve this property, all right, and have that as the wetlands and the, you know, the, the green space that we need and allow her to do the, the building that she needs, the reason why she wants this property in the first place, at that section of the quiet claim deed and then start going after trying to get this on the tax roll to be, because who says, say, say that I was the owner of the top, not the town wasn't, owner of the top could be doing the same exact thing and saying, hey, you know, this, 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 this should be part of this property.
Yep.
So, and again, I'm not trying to make it more difficult for you, I'm trying to make it, maybe we can give you, if we said quiet claim deed on this, on that property ourselves and, and then we said, here's your, here's your lot line adjustment, maybe that takes care of both sides because we retain most of the property for the watersheds and for the, for the green space that we need. And it also allow you to get what you need out of it. So that, that's what I'd like to frame.
And we don't even know how much you really need, you really need.
It's, it's a lot smaller than five, five acres for frontage.
So what I'm hearing as direction from the council to the town manager is, is let's take the next step and see where it goes.
Can I, can I just put something in your ear, though, just to let, you know, my full intent, what is, to have the whole, both, the whole lot and then combine both lots to make one entire lot that could never be divided again in today's rules and regulations? I don't even know how it got divided anyway. That is my intention.
So that's something you'd have to take up at the planning board and have to go through the process.
Yeah, and I would want to file it as one large piece personally, just to let, you know, I mean, the lot adjustment, the line adjustment, I, I don't mind exploring that as well, but just to let you know, my full intention, I kind of like the whole piece together.
And we're concerned, we're concerned with maintaining the watershed and we're concerned with.
Oh, I understand.
So maybe they can, the town manager can work out that part of it as well.
Yep, yep.
So that everybody is amicable, amicable agreement.
Yep, no, I understand, that's part of the reason why I like the property, though, is because of the wildlife and.
Well, I mean, to be clear, this is never getting developed.
No.
Whether you own it or not.
Okay, so I think the direction is, is let's see what the next step looks like, let's go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, council.
All right, let's see what we've got here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 16th and January 23rd as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, minutes are approved. Joe, do me a favor, I'm just going to step out for a minute to use the restroom, could you please start the Utilities Commission interviews?
Okay, so I guess we have a few people to interview tonight. It looks like we are going to be interviewing, I, there's a list here somewhere. Let me just get the list here. So it looks like we have a few interviews scheduled for tonight on the Utilities Committee. And the first one that I have up on the, the list is Ray Brezlin. Please come forward and if you could state your, your full name and address, one more time for the record.
Hey, Ray, are you new to town? Joe.
Ray Brezlin, 3 Gary Drive.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Do you have questions?
Did you have an opening comment at all?
Well, I put in for the Utility Committee.
Correct.
That the council is thinking about putting into operation shortly, and I think it's very important that we look at these things that affect the cost of the taxpayers and the property owners. Electric power is key. As we know, the cost has gone up, oh, it's pretty much double and potentially, it could go up more. A lot of people are struggling with that. And then we have home heating oil. Now, is that part of utility? Not really, but all of this affects the cost of homeowner, taxpayer, so we need to look at a lot of these things. Water is also a utility, which is something that we really need to look at. Pennecheck Water is the prime supplier of municipal water to the Town of Londonderry and more and more, we're looking at expanding that, which is going to cost a lot of money. So, and they, they have put in for an increase and the cost of everything's going up. So we really need to look at this and kind of do some studies to understand the cost. And then we have the cost of running the municipal buildings, which is something that And then we have the cost of running the municipal buildings, which is something that we have looked at previously on our Energy Task Force. So, this is kind of a continuation of that, but, but we need to look at the other utilities also. So, and as far as my experience, I think you've, you've got a copy of that.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, you checked off alternate member, you were looking for, being an alternate member, not a full member?
Yeah, it was for conservation commission.
Just want to make sure, a full member? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I see that, apologize, just wanted to make sure. Excellent. All right, board, do we have questions for Ray? Would you like to start?
Mr. Breslin, are you a resident here in town?
Yes, I am. See, I, absolutely.
Sorry. This felt like a little liberty.
How about, how about 50 years?
50 years?
Does that count? You know what I mean?
You and my wife.
I don't know about that one. I've been married for 52 years, you know.
Now, she, her family moved here in 68, 69.
Yeah, yeah. When'd you say you graduated from high school, '78?
Yeah, listen, you probably have socks-
I was about ready to retire then, you know what I mean?
Probably have socks older than me, right?
Mr. Melody, how many positions are open on the Utilities Committee?
Seven.
Seven? No alternates?
I think we said two, right?
There are alternates. I apologize, Councilman Franz, I don't have that. I'll pull it up. I believe it's three.
No.
Three alternates, seven members.
Pardon me, Deb?
You were going to say something, and I was-
My apologies.
How many alternates do we have?
Are you ready? I just want to say that Ray was a very big asset to the Energy Committee. He, you give him a task, and he follows through, and he gets you all the detail, he'll go up to Concord, he'll dig for books, he'll find every bit of information that will help you with pulling together the data needed on a board like this, and he has a good understanding of how a lot of the utilities work in the state. So, for that reason, I have to say he's a good candidate.
And the good thing is, I don't cost you anything. Huh? What the heck am I doing that for? You know what I mean? No, but it's important to volunteer and pay attention and, and try to help out, all of us, the average citizen, you know. I'm doing okay, you know, but some folks are not, and some people are really struggling. And then, the town itself is trying to control its cost, and one of the biggest costs is the cost of utilities. Well, there are other costs, but a lot of costs. One other thing that I think we also need to look at, and I'm not sure it's utilities, but recycling. Huh? Recycling, recycling. One of the biggest costs for the town of Londonderry, I think, is recycling, or getting rid of waste and so forth, and can't we do a better job? Look, look, we're talking about rebuilding all the schools for millions and millions of dollars, and we've got to look at that, because, wait a minute, we're going to be redoing the heating system in those plants, and maybe we should be looking at, about a heating system, maybe we should even be looking at woodchips, like a lot of school departments in the state of New Hampshire have their own woodchip plant. The University of New Hampshire has one, Boscowin has one, Lebanon has one, I mean, there's, I can give you a whole list of ones that are taking advantage of it, and the good thing about that is, that keeps the money in the state of New Hampshire. The logger goes out and cuts the trees, he's got all the branches and stuff on the ground, he puts them through his chipper, and then he's got to get rid of them, or he just can leave them there, but, wait a minute, he can take them to a woodchip plant, he can get paid for that, the owner of the woodchip plant pays for it, and they make electricity that they sell back, or they can make steam, too, and heat buildings like schools. We need to look at all of those things. I mean, we have the knowledge to do things better, and we should really take advantage of these things. Look, I go up to, I go up to Concord, I go up to Manchester Water, I go up to the wastewater treatment plant in Manchester, I go up, I introduce myself, I ask questions, and people will talk to me. You know, some of them actually call me back, you know.
Mr. Chairman, while you were gone, I asked Ray if he wanted to make an opening statement, so just wanted to know.
Did I go over the three minutes?
So, hurting to stand.
How much time I got?
I'm passing the baton back to the chairman. So, Ray, I wasn't running the time clock, thank God, right?
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Passing the baton back.
You know, and the thing of it is, look, look-
So, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Breslin?
No.
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 I just want to say, having a relationship with you in this capacity, I've been very impressed with your research, analysis, and abilities, and I think you'd be a value asset to the utilities.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And, look, I ain't got all the answers either, you know, we're all working together here, and we all put our thoughts together, and we have the ability to figure things out and do things better. So, let's do that.
Mr. Chair, do you want to motion on-
I actually, I want to go through and interview everybody first.
Yeah, yeah.
There could be somebody better.
Let's sit, think about it, take a step backwards.
Interview everybody first. So, who else do I have being interviewed tonight? Yes, sir, your name?
They're all here.
Mr. Ramsey? Well, come on up. I'm just going to start. You've all been very patient, I want to get this moving for you.
Yeah.
And now, you know, Ray made extensive opening, you know, comments and everything else. Of course, we're kidding.
I believe in the three Bs. Be brief, be kind, and be gone.
That's what Father Toro used to teach us, you know.
Oh, my Lord.
If it couldn't have been said in three minutes, it probably wasn't worth saying.
Understood.
Do you have an opening statement at all?
Well, I, my career was in the utility business. I worked for PSNH EverSource for 43 years.
God bless you.
I was there when many of the lights were out, and heard from many of you when the lights were out, restoring power, but was also part of the deregulation of that industry. So, I have working knowledge of that. I have working knowledge of regulatory processes, the Public Utilities Commission, and various agencies, and so forth and so on. I've negotiated solar contracts, all kinds of things, I've negotiated with wood burning power plants as well, actually converted one of our power plants to a wood-fired plant on the seacoast, Shilla Station. So, I then retired, got bored, took a little job at the theater, and moved to Londonderry six years ago, my wife, we thought this would be a nice town to retire in, and been looking for an opportunity just to get back to the town. And I saw the article in the paper, I said, "I've got a little knowledge in this area, I'm happy to share with anybody," and so I submitted my name, and that's, that's the whole story.
So, Paul, did you know Elizabeth LaRocca?
Very well.
Great lady.
Yes.
So, when she told me she was retiring, I was just devastated.
Elizabeth was the best. She really was.
She was fantastic. You know, I just recently met her replacement, Don, and he is doing everything he can do to live up to Liz's reputation. And he's got a tall task, and he knows that.
She's going to be tough to beat, to be honest with you.
Questions? Anyone who would like to start?
Mr. Chairman, you have, you have some, we have a name of it called the Utilities Committee, and we have the former Vice President of PSNH EverSource. Do we have to say, drop the mic?
I agree with Joe.
So, I have no questions, sorry. I had to say that. It's a drop the mic moment.
Things are leaning your way, Paul.
Joe said it all.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you for your willingness to serve as well.
I don't know where it'll take us, but I'm happy to share knowledge.
You know what, and neither do we. That's the whole thing, is we're trying to figure out where to go, and you'll probably provide a lot of guidance.
I've seen a lot of errors made in this world, contracts and all of that, and if we can avoid some of those for the town of Londonderry, you know, we could save some money. So, you know, it's not a simple, straightforward business, no.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry, Deb, anything from you?
I just wanted to say, I was excited personally to hear that you negotiated solar contracts, because that is something from the Energy Task Force that we were looking at, is taking the contaminated land that we have, and turning that into a huge solar farm that could really, pretty much do a lot of the town. But it was dealing with EverSource, and so if you know how to sail that ship through there-
I still have friends at EverSource, yes.
That would be amazing. It was very difficult, as an outsider, trying to-
Yeah, unfortunately, their hands are tied to some degree by the regulators, so there's a sort of a, they can go so far, but they can't go too far.
Right, and the solar people are telling us, "Oh, you can do this, you can do that," and then you talk to EverSource and you're like, "No."
Oh, they'll tell you everything. We used to be, my department, I used to head up engineering, we used to hook up a lot of the solar arrays and solar issues and that type of thing, and so, the difficult part is you need to protect the solar array from anything that our power grid would affect your solar array, and vice versa, so that neither infrastructure is harmed, given whatever either one does, if you will. So, there's a, it's not a simple task, because-
Yeah, no, like I said, that's what excited me.
Yeah.
Well, Paul, thank you.
We have to wait to make a motion, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
That's fine.
We're going to talk to everybody. So, who else? I'll start on this end of the room, Martha, would you like to go next? Because nobody here in town knows you.
Martha.
Yeah.
My name is Martha Smith, and I was on the Energy Task Force that previously worked on these issues and made a presentation to the council, and out of that presentation, this committee was formed. I am a retired attorney. I worked for 10 years for an energy services company, and I worked very well with Ray on the previous Energy Task Force, and one of our focuses was trying to bring together, in terms of the utilities, the schools and the town, so we know what each other's doing, open up lines of communication so certain projects aren't happening that could really benefit the whole, and those are my qualifications.
Folks, any questions for Martha?
So, Mr. Chairman, we had just heard from the Vice President of PSNH, and now we have an attorney of utilities coming forward.
Another return.
Moving down the line, huh, Joe?
No, no, somebody that worked in utilities, attorney that worked in utilities.
I just would like to say thank you as well-
Awesome.
-for your service and dedication on the previous committee, and for your willingness to continue to serve our community and move us forward in the right direction. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. I love the opportunity to give back something to the town.
Well, thank you, Martha.
And are you here for the same reason?
Yep.
So, Aunt Fenn?
Hi.
Did I?
Do we, do we, do we talk to you about this one already?
I think you guys have. Well, I was on the PFAS committee. I work free PA.
On this list.
Remember the PFAS committee?
For whatever- No, no, she's, she's on the committee with me, with the elderly affairs.
And I'm on that, yeah.
Yep.
So, that's who we just interviewed, Aunt Fenn. It looks like she was missed on the list.
Oh, okay.
So, but we all know, Ann.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions? Do you guys have any questions for Ann?
No.
We're going to make this easy for you this time, Ann. You've only come up and been interviewed like six times.
I know. Yeah, but I think, in all fairness, did you want to talk a little bit about your background? That would be to this committee.
That little job you had at the EPA?
Right.
Little, little, yeah.
Yeah, I worked at EPA, and the Office of Technology Assessment, which is part of the United States Congress. I have a master's in science, technology, and public policy, and my specialty is really more the environmental energy area. And I used to lead in-
I'll drop the mic.
I can answer any question. I used to lead at EPA in the Boston office. I worked in the DC office for a number of years in the Superfund program, so if we're talking about looking at Superfund sites-
Auburn Road, Tinkham.
Yeah. I mean, we would have to look at the institution, we'd have to look at the institutional controls and the AFRS, sorry, AFRS is no Superfund acronym, before we could do anything with those sites, but possibly, it's a possibility.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions for Ann? Ann, thank you for sitting through another meeting and being part of everything. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sir? I'm sorry, I'm just moving around the room. What was your name, sir?
My name is Jeff McGraw.
Hi, Jeff.
I am new to Londonderry. I've been here since July.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do I need to tell you my address?
Please.
9 Eden House Drive, Londonderry.
Terrific, thank you.
So, my background is recent transplant, my background is engineering, mechanical engineering undergrad, when I worked for a year and a half in a nuclear power plant as an engineer. After working as an engineer, after graduation, I worked designing gas systems for the semiconductor industry, and then went to get a master's degree in business and international relations, subsequently worked in industrial investing, and then worked as a strategy consultant for tech companies, and for about five years, I was an investment banker in renewable energy and project finance for solar panels, woodchip plants, that type of thing. Left that, and I've been working as a strategy consultant for aerospace companies for strategy and mergers and acquisitions, and also sit on the board of directors for a technology company. Moved here to Londonderry, I want to give back, want to be part of the community, I've been on boards everywhere I've lived since I graduated, for, you know, town boards, condo associations, just trying to be part of the team, so.
So, Jeff, I noticed you have one of your notes here, the Manchester Airport Authority, do you have a pilot's license?
I do not.
Because one of the positions we have to put a pilot up for, that's why I just asked.
I do not, no.
But I'm sorry, I'll-
I consult for the defense space and aerospace, and-
Okay.
So, that's why, that's one of the-
It's an interesting board.
You may, and Council, you may remember Mr. McGraw from the morning of the Utilities, I'm sorry, the Senior Expo, I believe it was, he was down at the track and introduced himself to us.
Oh, yeah, we had the golf courts going and everything.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Nice meeting. And I remember.
Yeah, you're like, "Oh, I told you, I said I wanted to get involved in the community and on board," and it's like, "Oh, I'm the town manager, and I'm the chairman of the town."
Well, terrific. I'm glad we said something that got you here.
Yeah, my wife was laughing, and she thought it was hilarious, sort of, syndipotously how things work out, so.
Fantastic, go ahead.
So, sounds like you have some knowledge about how to get some money for this thing, right? So, since you've been on some of the boards and the bankers and stuff?
Yeah, I've worked on, in the defense space, I've worked on about $10 to $12 billion of defense acquisitions, and I've worked on about, I've looked at about a billion dollars' worth of energy projects, and I've worked on about $300 million, close to about $100 million.
That's it?
And when, and when you had the experience of banking, you actually were able to do what now, with, as far as the energy?
We were working, we were doing project finance, so we weren't investing in, like, EverSource, we're working with independent power producers.
Okay.
So, if someone wants to build a solar plant, or someone wants to build, you know, one of the cool projects was a guy in Arizona who was taking the manure from a cattle, cattle feed lot-
Yeah.
-and turning it into something called biochar, which is just one of the coolest things in the world, and, and then also taking some of it to digest into natural gas or town gas. So, raising money is something that we can do, we can help structure the investments, so it's good for the town, good for investors, or getting fund, you know, if we reach out to the correct investors, getting funds to build maybe the power plant for the, for the town, for the schools, without any cost to the city.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, that you could bring to the table, those connections.
It's definitely possible. I would not represent that I would guarantee that I could raise the funds.
Right, but you have connections there, and you don't understand the situation because you worked in that field.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's-
It's my only question, Chairman.
Community Power Authorities, you know, we have, we can go back someday about the history of the power plant in town, talk about-
Oh, yeah, I don't have any details on the power plant in town, obviously.
No, I'm just saying, we can go back on the history of the discussions, fill you in on-
Sure.
What was, what was discussed, it was certainly very intense, I'll just-
I can imagine, yeah, there's lots of money involved in those conversations.
So, anyone else for Jeff?
No.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Jeff, thanks for, thanks for sitting through our meeting tonight, appreciate it. All right, who's next? Ron's looking for something else to do, you know.
Yeah, I was going to say.
He needs to be involved in more things.
Like the sixth one. All right. Hi, I'm John Ferrera, 58 Harvey Road. Let's see, I'm involved with the town, and my background started off, I'm the guy who brought you cable TV in the 70s, and also the other 14 communities, so I know a little bit about-
Did you call them Adelphia back then?
Yes, it was.
Oh, yeah.
And then I started suing at $50,000 a day, and they decided to sell, because they failed on their contract. So, it gives me a lot of background in builds, cable overbuilds, construction, gas lines, power lines, all that kind of good stuff that we had to go through to get that done. In the meantime, I also served on the computer committee when we were first trying to build computers in the town, the interconnection later on when I was the cable chairman, so we could connect the police station with the town hall, with the library, and all that kind of stuff. I was also involved in the field committees, up until they kicked us out of the fields behind the school and used it, and West Road came to our rescue, so involved in all of that. What else? My background is in engineering. I designed mainframes in my younger life, software engineer, hardware engineer. Was fortunate enough to, at the cost of fuel a package, go to legal school to learn about contracts, corporate, and even though they offered to pay for my whole thing, I realized that I could make twice as much money, not being a lawyer, but being director of engineering.
That's true.
So, I do have a very extensive background in contract negotiation, things like that. What else I done? Early development, the rec programs in the town, I mean, real early, soccer, softball, baseball, and basketball. Eventually, started the London Derry Express, London Derry Girl Soccer thing, which has now evolved. After that, what did I do? Oh, so most recently, I, you might have seen my face on the water tower issue. So, I was a guy who was kind of like working with that committee and presented what we had to. That's really about it. I just like to get back involved and go from there.
Any questions for John?
Why energy? Why the Utility Committee?
Okay, so, we should look into geo. I have some background in that. I do have a lot of other things, we have a lot of other good people here. Why energy, but it's not just energy. One, I'm worried about a couple of things. Mostly the water. I think we're not being treated fairly by the Water Commission, how we get billed. I'm also worried about only having one source, and looking at other possibilities of hooking up maybe with the next town, and going through a structure like that. So, that's part of the utilities. Cable, I was the guy who stood up and did a presentation to the Senate on Mr. Markey when he was head of the communications thing, and whether you know it or not, at one time it was against the law to own a radio station or a TV station within 100 miles of each other. Okay? And look what we've got ourselves into, okay? We've got now cable companies controlling the news we get to see and controlling the movie companies, which is something that is restricted. In our contract, we do allow for overbuild in this town, and I think we should start looking at that. So, either overbuild or forcing the rights, having another cable company come in to charge a lot less money, okay? So, there's a few of the things. I also have engineering background, mechanical engineering, and construction.
Thank you.
Awesome, good.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
That's fair, I'm down.
Appreciate it.
For sitting through the meeting. Who have I missed? You're the only one left, Ron?
Come on, Ron. Come on down.
I put my name in because as a part of the Energy Task Force, it was awesome, what we did as a group together, I mean, right, we worked awesome together. So, I think the power of that group, being able to have some people, some power in the town to enact that is amazing. So, I think, and also now, the position I'm in, I'm on, you know, as a state rep, on the Resource Recreation Development Team, I work with New Hampshire DES every day, that's what we do. I'm also on the HB 737 Committee, so once again, I work with New Hampshire DES, so anything we need for contacts with DES, I'm the guy. So, you guys know me, if you, I put my name in because we really had a good, really good team on the Energy Committee, and I'd like to see that continue, and I'd like to see what kind of power we can do in the town as a group.
Just so you're aware, I mean, if you, if you're successful in your run for Town Council, you can't serve on that.
Correct.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, that's fine.
Because I know you've got all kinds of spare time.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what I was going to ask.
I'm still married, amazingly.
And you actually still work, correct?
I still work.
Yeah, I was going to say.
She's a very amazing lady. Anyone for Ron?
I just, I just wanted to say, Ron, I know that Mr. Malaguti and the council had discussed having a non-position as a liaison to the committee as a state rep, and so it could be anybody who is a state rep, and I'm just thinking that if you wanted to, you could look at that position for this committee.
I could do that, I thought you guys wanted Doug Thomas to do that, so it's up to you guys, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I haven't seen his name.
I don't want to step on anybody's toes.
I haven't seen Doug's either.
I don't want to step on anybody's toes, so.
I'm being fair, his name is not here, your name is.
Yep.
And because you are running, and you may not be able to do both.
I'm fine with that, the council decides.
You were great keeping minutes and keeping us on track, so I just was saying that it would be good for you to be a liaison, if that should happen.
Absolutely.
That's all, I wanted to put it out there.
Whatever you guys decide, I'm happy to help.
Ron, okay, do you have enough time?
No. Thank you, guys.
Ron told me sleep is underwrited.
Oh, sleep is underwrited.
So, what do you want to do?
We interviewed seven, six, or, uh.
Well, seven people tonight. Lynn Wiles is not here, but he's served on so many committees. You know, I, we're not going to learn anything new if he comes.
How about Joy?
Who's Joy?
Beautify Londonderry.
Pardon me?
She's the chair. She's the chair of Beautify Londonderry.
And, well, we know Mike Speltz.
Who's Matt?
Matt.
You don't have to nominate tonight, I mean, you can wait if you want.
Why don't we wait? I'd like to see if these other people show up.
It's up to you guys, whatever you guys want to do. I mean, you can nominate half, I mean, you can, you can start the process and not complete the process, you can do whatever you want to do.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to nominate and make a motion to accept, and these are all for full membership, right? So, this is Ray Breslin, Paul Ramsey, Martha Smith, John Ferreira, Ron Dunn, and that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and actually Jeff McGraw and Anne Fenn as full members.
Second.
Anne Fenn.
Anne Fenn, that's what I said. That's what I said.
You're Martha, she's Anne.
Second.
So, what I want to ask is, I want to ask clarifying question. Do you want to leave Ron on as the state rep, so that he, we can always add another state liaison rep, you can always add on to them.
Yeah.
So, if you make Ron the state liaison rep, that way, if he, you know, if he's successful in his endeavor, he can stay on the committee.
Yeah, I'll amend that, makes sense.
Put Mike Speltz in because he's very good on environmental.
Mike Speltz, so there you go, so there's your seven, and then we have the state rep. And I should just note that Mr. Speltz is out of town this evening, is my understanding.
So, I'd also recommend that, because Lynn Wiles is on the Waste and Sedentation Committee and on the planning board, I'd recommend that you add his name as well.
As an alternate?
You can do full-time or alternate.
We have seven.
The only advantage you have to somebody like Mr. Wiles is, is that he has served on multiple boards in towns and knows our processes and procedures. That might be helpful, so you may want to think about that, because they're going to have to elect a chair first.
Is there anyone here that would be willing to be an alternate?
I like that, no one. I like that.
Good answer.
Well, Lynn said he'd be an alternate.
But then he can't be chairman.
He could be the alternate chairman.
The only reason, the only reason I bring him about is, is because I do know he knows the structure of, you know.
How to run a meeting, Robert Schulze.
Well, how our processes work. It's the only reason I bring it up.
So, I want to throw another wrench into here. I've asked to be on this committee, and I, my name wasn't added to the list. I will no longer be a town councillor, but I did ask to also be part of this committee.
So, the council can make a decision to leave an alternate position open if they so choose, and on the last day of your term, the council can make a decision to do something if they want to.
Okay.
That's, that's your best path, because then you won't.
I'm just putting it out there, I just wanted people to know.
I'm not saying no, I'm just trying to tell you how we can do it.
You want me to be an alternate, that's fine. We'll come to the meeting anyways. Yeah, I'll show up anyway.
So, you want to attract there, Joe, what do you want to do?
Joe, you want to modify?
Yep, I got him. So, we got, say it again, so full member, Paul Ramsey, right? Martha.
You'd be an alternate.
And what we should?
No, no, no.
All right, let's go, Joe.
Paul Ramsey, one, Martha Smith, Martha Smith, two, John Ferreira, three. These are the, these are the full members. Mike Speltz, four, Jeff McGraw, five, Anne Fenn, six, and Lynn Wiles, seven. And then we're going to have Ron Dunn as the state rep, and we have the three.
Ray Breslin as an alternate.
Ray Breslin as one alternate, and then we have two others that we will name later.
There's only two more people here.
You checking the motions?
Yes, it's in the form of a motion.
Joe, can I interrupt you, though? There's only two more people left.
I know, but they weren't here.
But that fills up your three alternates.
Okay, but then we wouldn't be able to keep one open.
That's fine, I don't, I can still just go to the meetings, it's fine.
Well, trying to see if we're going to come.
That's fine.
I think we should keep one open.
I think you need to be on there.
Yeah, I do, too.